Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission's special meeting of July 26th, 2021. For viewers watching at home, some commissioners and some members of the public are participating via video conference or teleconference. Please join me and, oh, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Secretary please call the rule?
Commissioner Lanson?
Present.
Commissioner Link?
Present.
Commissioner McMahon?
Present.
Commissioner Newman?
Present.
And Chair Buss?
Present.
All right. Tonight, we have with us interim deputy community development director Steve Kearns. That's a mouthful. Mr. Kearns, are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
Thank you, Chair Buss. We did receive one email correspondence related to item 7A after the pack was distributed, and that was presented to each commissioner via supplemental package this afternoon. That's all announcements.
Now is the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on the evening's agenda. Should the commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must complete a speaker card and file it with the recording secretary before the public comments portion of the agenda is called. The speaker remarks should be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member. Unless otherwise provided by the commission, speakers are limited to five minutes. The screen will show you the remaining time you have. Do we have any speakers tonight? Okay. So next, we have the consent calendar with the minutes of June 7th, 2021. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chair?
Oh. Commissioner Newman. Vice Chair Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the minutes of the June 7th meeting be adopted.
Excellent. Will the Secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
And Chair Buss?
Aye.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Perfect. And next, we'll be moving on to public hearings. Will the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A, tentative tract map TTM 2018-70478, residential plan development RPD 2018-70479, oak tree permit OTP 2018-70480, and mitigated negative declaration MND 2020-70459 to subdivide a 3.21 acre residential lot into 10 residential lots to accommodate the construction of 10 single-family residences, including the construction of a private road, removal of two oak trees, encroachment and pruning into the protected zone of three oak trees, new walls, hardscape, landscape, and grading. A mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for the project for performance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, located at APN 6600121010 at the northeast corner of Lynn Road and Kelly Road. The applicant is Musafar Adalan.
Thank you. Presenting on behalf of staff is Senior Planner Carlos Contreras.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is a request for a subdivision and a request to construct 10 single-family residences at the northeast corner of Lynn Road and Kelly Road. As far as the specifics go for the project details, tentative tract map 2018-70478 is a request to subdivide 3.21 acres into 10 single-family residential lots. You also have a residential plan development to construct the 10 single-family residences, which includes a private access road, hardscape, landscape, walls, and grading. The project also includes an oak tree permit to remove two oak trees, and also includes the pruning and encroachment into the protected zone of three oak trees. The project includes a mitigated neck deck that was prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. As far as Planning Commission review goes, section 9-3.202 allows the Planning Commission to review and approve the project with appropriate conditions of a tract map. A little bit of background on the proposed project. Back in February of 1978, the City Council approved a zone change to change the project's property zoning from rural exclusive to residential plan development, which is what you have today. In September of 1981, the Planning Commission approved residential plan development to allow the construction of nine single-family residences. Subsequently thereafter, in 1983, 1984, and 85, the applicant was granted three one-year time extensions. However, in November of 1986, the RPD expired, which is why you have the application before you tonight for a 10-lot subdivision. As far as the project setting goes, again, as previously mentioned, the property is a 3.21 acre site. It has an ascending slope from Kelly Road toward the eastern portion of the property. There are existing oak trees on the site, and there is existing residential properties surrounding the entire property, and you have open space to the southeast. The subject site is zoned RPD, single-family dwelling. Residential structures are allowed within the RPD zone, and the property's land use designation is low-density residential. The proposed project does provide for infrastructure improvements. There is sewer and water connectivity provided along East Kelly Road along the western portion of the property, which I'll get into a little bit later. As far as the lay of the land and the project setting goes, here's an aerial photograph of the subject property. In the red, I indicate the subject site, where you're going to have the proposed 10 residences. And you also, in the blue, you have the ascending topography. As I mentioned earlier, the property ascends from Kelly Road on the western portion of the site up down Lynn Road to the east. You also have existing residences to the north, to the west, and to the south, demonstrated here in the orange. You also have open space located to the southeast of the subject property across Lynn Here's a photograph of the subject property. As you can see here, you have Lynn Road on the right-hand side, and then you have East Kelly Road on the left-hand side. The proposed project, as you can see here in the red, is where the residences will be constructed on the property. They will be constructed along Lynn Road towards the east of the property. And in the green there, along Kelly Road, you have the private road access, the private road that's in the cul-de-sac design. In the yellow, I indicate their sidewalk. The proposed project does include right-of-way improvements. Along Kelly Road, the applicant would be required to construct sidewalk. However, on Kelly Road, the applicant would be required to construct curb gutter and sidewalk as far as the project construction goes. Here's another photograph of the subject property. This was taken off of Lynn Road looking towards northwest. As you can see, in the red, we have the location of the proposed residences. Lynn Road does have an existing bike lane, although no bike lane improvements are going to be proposed as a result of this project. In the orange there, I do indicate and demonstrate the existing residences that are sitting below the actual grade of the subject property. As you can see here, the actual grade of the site is a little bit above Lynn Road. The proposed project would require grading, and the applicant would be grading the pads more in line with the grade of Lynn Road. Here's a site plan of the proposed project. In the green, you gain access to the subject property off of Kelly Road. Stretching to the east, you have a private road in a cul-de-sac design. You also have the 10 residential properties indicated in blue. The orange polygons demonstrate the private driveway access for each individual lot. In the purple, you have, for lot number nine, you have the individual access provided off of Kelly Road, just specifically to lot number nine. This is the latest and greatest iteration of the project plans. There was a previous iteration in 2018 that had a couple more flag lots on the property. Since that time, the applicant has redesigned the project, so there are no more flag lots on the subject site. As far as the project details go, as previously mentioned, tentative tract map is for the 10-lot subdivision. The proposed property or the proposed project would be proposing the 10 lots, and the allowed density on the subject property is up to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. Based on this current design on a 3.21 acre lot for 10 residences, the total density is 3.1 units to the acre, so it's below the maximum allowable. Improvements associated with the proposed project, as I previously mentioned, are going to be curb gutter and sidewalk along Kelly Road, and then you're going to have sidewalk improvements along Lynn Road. The project does include a new private access road off of East Kelly. As far as the residential plan development goes, you're going to have a mix of one- and two-story residences at a maximum of 25 feet in height. There is one restriction on lot number 10 that staff has included to limit that specific residence to a one-story design. The applicant would have to come in with a deed restriction to restrict any kind of second-story addition on that specific lot. The purpose of that is to make sure that we reduce any kind of visual impacts off of Kelly Road and Lynn Road. The residences include two attached garages and also guest parking along the southern portion of that private driveway. Each residence will be provided its own separate driveway access, as previously mentioned. Associated development with these residences would include landscaping, hardscaping, retaining walls, and utilities. Based on the project's design and review of the development standards, the project does comply with various development standards as part of the municipal code as far as height, setback, and parking, et cetera. The applicant would be required to comply with the precise plan and design guidelines to provide for enhanced architectural design and make sure that the residences are constructed with architectural compatibility. As I mentioned earlier, there are existing residences to the north, to the south, and to the west, and so we want to make sure that the homes that are constructed on the subject property are of a size, mass, and scale that is compatible to the existing development pattern out there. As far as the residential plan development, this table here just basically indicates, it was provided in the staff report, the three different model types for these 10 homes. Model type A is a one-story design, approximately a 3,000-square-foot residence, three bedrooms, two-and-a-half bath, and that's going to be provided for lots four, six, eight, and 10. As I mentioned earlier, lot number 10 is going to be restricted to one story. And model B, you have a two-story design. That's another type of model that's going to be a large portion of the constructed homes out there. They're looking at two-story design with 3,438 square feet, four bedrooms, three baths, and again, a two-car garage. And then you have model type C. That's going to be one story, a little bit smaller, at 2,700 square feet, three bed, two-and-a-half bath. It's all going to propose the attached two-car garage, and model type C is only going to be for lot number three, as currently proposed. As far as the oak tree impacts go, there are five coastlife oak trees that are located on the subject property. Because of the proposed development, as far as the grading activities go and the building paths for these homes, two oak trees will have to be removed. Based on the tree report submitted for the project and recommendations from our city's tree consultant, it appears that these trees are of above-average health, and they will be necessary to be removed to accommodate the residences and the proposed walls on the property. The project does also include pruning and encroachment into three oak trees. Those trees are of average health according to the tree report, and that oak tree indicated here in the, well, those three oak trees are indicated in the dash green on the screen, and that's going to be primarily impacted because of the private road and also because of lot number one as far as the walls and grading is concerned. As far as the elevations go, again, there are three model types, but here I just demonstrate two of them. You have model type C on the top. You know, they provide for a pitch rough. They include roofline variation, facade articulation, and varied building materials to enhance the architectural design of the building. You also have the two-story design where they reduce the massing of the second story, again, to reduce any kind of visual impact from surrounding properties. Again, the two-story building will also have a pitch rough, a roofline variation, and enhanced building materials, and the conditions of approval have been applied to the project to limit the height to 25 feet. As far as public correspondence goes, staff did provide a hearing notice at various levels. We provided a notice of application for the project, posted a large sign on the property. We also notified property owners within 500 feet so that they're fully aware of the proposed project. And to date, we've only received a couple of email correspondence. One of them was in support of the project, indicating that the property's been vacant, and they want to see some improvements along Lynn and Kelly Road. And also, just today, we received another piece of correspondence from a neighboring property owner indicating that they would like to see the trees that are being removed preserved on the site. And as far as the environmental review, as I mentioned earlier, we did prepare a mitigated negative decoration for the project. The mitigated neck deck identified potential significant impacts that may result from the proposed project. However, with the mitigation measures applied, the impacts would be reduced to a level of insignificance. The mitigation measures have been applied to the project through the conditions of approval, and they would have to be implemented prior to any grading or building permits. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the general plan in that is, property is zoned RPD and allows for single-family residential structures, and it is within the density allowed as far as the general plan is concerned. The proposed project design meets the city's standards, codes, and policies. The project is compatible with surrounding residential land uses. The design meets, well, the proposed design has implemented various design elements that reduce visual impacts, so reducing those impacts from surrounding properties, because they are going to design these homes to comply with the precise plan and design guidelines, and they are going to be designed to be compatible with the existing development pattern out there. And the proposed project is not detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare as the project was reviewed by the Ventura County Fire Department, Community Development Department, Public Works Department, and police. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the tentative tract map, the residential plan development, the oak tree permit, and accept the mitigated neck deck that was prepared for the project based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in the draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Senior Planner Contreras. Are there any questions or comments from my fellow commissioners? I'll start on the left. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, hi. I noticed that the tree report was from 2018, and then the width of the trunks of the two trees that are to be removed was around two inches. Has anybody gone out there since 2018 and updated that?
Because there weren't significant modifications to the proposed project design, there wasn't a requirement to update the tree report. However, staff did receive the recommendations, and based on the current design and the information in the tree report, the trees that were impacted were already protected, so if they grew any larger, they're still going to be protected as part of the project.
Okay. And the other question was, the area, as you drive in to the left, which is against the backyards of the current residences, how wide will that be, and will there be landscaping there?
Yes. Here, I have the site plan. You're referring to the private road, correct?
Yes.
Private road, the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
I don't have the exact dimension on hand, but I will let Brad Bustle with our Public Works Department indicate the standards that the project will have to comply with as far as the design of that private road.
Okay. And my last question?
Oh, sorry, but I wanted to quickly answer, but there will be landscaping provided along the northern property line.
Okay. Okay. So one more question was, when I went to the property on Kelly, it is about, I don't know, four or five feet up, and you said that it's going to be graded down to the level of Lynn Road? And how will it be sloped to Kelly? Will it be a steep slope? I'm trying to visualize that.
Yes. So based on the preliminary plans, again, we don't have any precise grading plans at the moment, but based on the plans that were provided to date, you would have Kelly, you have Lynn Road, and you would have them grade the property to be at the same level of grade as Lynn Road. Then you would have the wall for the tract, and then beyond that wall, it would then have a manufactured slope, dropping the elevation to a lower grade, more consistent with the elevation of Lynn Road.
Okay.
So effectively, the building paths would be at a lower grade than what you're seeing right now in that photograph that I presented to you earlier, because it berms up off of Lynn. It would provide some grading there and then provide a perimeter wall, and then manufacture slope beyond that to build a building pad.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
All right. Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair Buss, and thank you, Mr. Contreras, for your report. Going back to just a quick follow-up on Commissioner McMahon's question as to the grading, I understand from Lynn the other way, but you said it was an ascending process. Where is the water going to be draining that's coming down the ascending slope?
Yeah. I'll defer that question to Public Works Department as far as the drainage plan and what they're going to do as far as drainage goes for the project.
Good pass.
Yeah. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Brad Bustle in the Public Works Department. Yes, as Carlos stated, everything slopes to the west, and then, once it gets to Kelly Road, it sheet flows down the gutters until it gets to, I believe it's Galway, and then there it gets picked up in our storm drain system and then goes across the freeway from there.
So is it going to be funneled more towards the private street or more towards Lynn?
No, it'll go away from Lynn. It'll go north, towards the freeway.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. You're off the hook. Back to Mr. Contreras. On the tree issue, the supplement we got, you said you got two emails, one that's in the pack and then the supplement we got today? Is that the only public comment we got?
Yeah. The first email was regarding support of the project, and the second email is with the supplemental package you got regarding protecting those or not removing those two oak trees.
And the way I'm reading the supplemental, she's referring, or whoever is, is referring to two oak trees at the corner of Lynn and Kelly. I just want to confirm, there's only one there, correct?
Yes. Based on the tree report and, you know, site investigation, we know that there's one oak tree at that corner, and then there's, I probably show this better on the plans because it shows you here. You have, you have one oak tree. Give me one second. Okay. So you see here, you have Kelly Road and you have Lynn Road. You have one existing oak tree to be removed here at this corner, and then we have the other oak tree along the eastern property line to be removed. We don't have any other indication of any other oak trees on the western portion of the property, so you have them along the northern perimeter and the northeastern perimeter.
The photograph you showed him when I was there, there's a lot more foliage that looks like than one tree on that corner. Is it other trees, or is that just one tree that just came out in different areas?
I believe it's one tree, but I'd have to look at the tree report and get back to you as to the number of branches that were cited in that report.
My, actually, the question was, a little more clarity as to explaining to everybody why is it that that has to come out? Again, showing the picture here, it looks like the house can be built and it's not going to impede it. Is there some more information as to why that tree needs to be removed?
Based on the design of the home, you have a significant amount of grading that's going to occur on the property, and I believe there's also going to be proposed walls out there. And based on the tree's health, I understand, based on, again, the memorandum that we received from the city's tree consultant, that that tree would not survive any kind of encroachment.
Okay. All right. That's all I have questions to add.
Commissioner Newman, I was ignoring you. Are you, do you have questions on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do. Thank you.
Vice Chair Newman, go ahead.
Mr. Contreras, thank you for your report. Are any of these houses designated as affordable housing, or are they all market rate?
Based on the information provided to date, they're all market-rate, single-family homes.
Okay. All market rate? In the report on the section on infrastructure upgrades, are the taxpayers liable for any infrastructure costs associated with this project?
No. All new infrastructure, the water and the wastewater, and storm drains, that's all being paid for by the developer of the project.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bustle. With regard to the grading, there's a reference in the report to an 84-day grading period. That seems high to me, but I'm unfamiliar with grading plans. Is that a normal period for this amount of cut and fill?
I really don't have an answer for that. It's probably in the ballpark, especially for as much grading as they're doing on this property.
Okay. Thank you. And then, my final question, coming back to the oak trees, which is on page eight of the staff report, it's a bit vague on the question of whether the six replacement trees that would go in to replace the two that are coming out, are those six replacement trees, is it feasible to put all of those on site?
Well, it appears that there is enough area on the subject property to place those replacement trees on site. However, we do have a condition of approval applied to the project requiring that the applicant provide a tree location map before they go into any kind of grading, so he can identify the appropriate locations of those replacement trees, and then cross-check that with our city's tree consultant to make sure that those trees will survive and where they're going to be located.
Okay. But as things stand now, your understanding is that there is sufficient space to put all the replacements on site, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. To date, that's the information that we have, and there's enough area on the property to place those replacement trees on site.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Link, please. Floor is yours.
I'd, I actually have three questions. Two of them are actually for my own edification, and more than likely for Mr. Bustle, but the, is it, the city have standards with respect to separation distance between private driveways and an intersection?
Private driveways and, there's no separation between public or private streets, different than public streets and public streets, and driveways, yes, we do, and this far exceeds the R minimum difference, which is five feet.
Okay. The other one, again, from my own edification, is with regard to the cross slope. Just eyeballing it, assuming a 40-foot roadway, it looks like there's about a 5% cross slope sloping towards the neighbors. Is that within the city's development code or at least designed for private streets?
Yeah. We try to get 2% cross slope on a street. So anything over that is, it'll have to be checked during the plan check process. 2% is what we strive for.
And I'm probably speaking for my fellow commissioners, but I'm sure we're all used to seeing a normal crown of 2%, high in the middle, low on the sides.
Right. This will all be slope towards the, towards the north.
Okay.
That's what they're proposing at this point.
Okay. And then 5% doesn't exceed what we would normally expect for a private street?
It doesn't exceed, but we would prefer it to be 2%.
2%. Okay. And then the other question I had was with regard to noise. I saw the noise study and how it would affect the existing property, but was a noise analysis done to show what effects there could be to the adjacent properties as a result of having the access road immediately adjacent to existing residences?
There wasn't a specific noise study prepared for the project. You know, through the mitigated neck deck, the environmental consultant did identify that the project wouldn't result in any major significant impacts, and staff can indicate, perhaps, because you have residential uses and you're going to have, you know, 10 single-family homes out there, not a more intensive land use that would have more noise impacts. So, you know, as part of the environmental review process, we didn't require any noise studies based on the consultant's recommendations.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I just had a couple of questions to follow up. Originally in 1981, the plan was for nine units on this, and now they're asking for 10. Is there a significant difference in how these units line up relative to the plan that was approved 40 years ago?
I actually have that plan here. So here, we have the residential plan development. This is the actual design from that time. As you can see, you still have that private road along the northern portion of the site, but you had, is it one, two, three, four flag lots that were proposed? Lot number nine over here, you had lot number eight, lot number three, and lot number two were flag lots. And the 2018 design had something fairly similar, but since that time, they but since that time, they redesigned it to where we don't have any flag lots on the property.
Gotcha. Is the city specifically discouraging flag lots or is there any reason for that?
I can respond to that, Chair Buss. We try to avoid flag lots, particularly when there's shared driveways between two property owners, just because of the maintenance and the difficulty in having neighbors get along when they happen to share a driveway. So we did try to avoid it when we went through the design review.
All right, gotcha, all right. And following up on that, on lot nine for their design, as Commissioner Ling mentioned, their entrance would be directly off of Kelly Road, off of Lynn. Do we have a lot of lots like that where you're coming off a 50 mile an hour road on a right turn and landing in front of somebody's driveway?
To answer the word "a lot," we probably don't have a lot.
Do we have any?
Yes. And we looked closely at this and the driveway is as far away from the intersection as the design's been, as it could have been designed. Kelly Road is 25 miles an hour. It's a signalized intersection, so there's, you know, people will be approaching their section and probably not just flying around the corner because the signalized intersection tends to calm traffic down a little bit too. And then we've also imposed a sight distance condition on the property adjacent to it, so they have more sight distance, so they can see up and down the street.
Okay, following up on that then, you're saying there's going to be a wall on Lynn, correct? And we don't know what the grading is going to be on that side yet, correct? So we actually don't know what the line of sight is going to be, how did we set the requirement for that?
We have sight distance standards in our design plans. And so when it comes in for a plan check, we will make sure it meets the design, that meets our sight distance standards. And then the other one is for the property north of it, so that the wall for the property to the north doesn't impact sight distance of someone driving out of the driveway. So it's not for people driving down. Kelly Road is for the person who's trying to back out of their driveway that they can see up and down the street clearly.
Is that why lot 10 requires to have a single-story? Is there going to be recess beneath them?
No, a single-story is because it's a preferred planning design.
Okay, so I have a question about that then. So we have a two-story building directly behind it on Lynn Road, but we want the one-story on the interior, that's a, is that a functional feature or is that just for, seems to me it would be counterintuitive.
Yeah, well, I mean, what that does is lot number nine and 10 and then lot number eight would have a variation in roof lines and massing and scale. So you don't have just all two-story in that cluster in the corner, just one-story. So if you provide just one-story homes there, right, it wouldn't break up as nicely as having a variation of two-story and one-story. And again, it just provides for a variation in the design. And so there really isn't, that's the way the applicant designed their model. You know, for all we know, in the future, lot number nine, it might be, it could be a Model C or a Model A, which is a one-story residence.
Oh, yeah, the reason I was asking is because you were saying that you're going to de-restrict lot 10, correct? So that wasn't their choice, that was our choice?
That's a measure we implemented, to reduce any visual impacts.
Okay, so that was for visual impact, not for functionality. All right. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you. Now we ask for the applicant or applicant's representative to speak for 15 minutes. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. The microphones are over here and they should be live for you.
Good evening Chair Buss, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tom Cohen, I'm a resident here of Thousand Oaks, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Ardalon. It's a great, so great to be here. It's been a long time, COVID has kept us away, but I'm really happy that we're able to do this in person. I also want to, I like to start out by first expressing our appreciation and gratitude to staff. They've put a lot of time and effort into this project and their input has definitely improved this project along this four-year journey. With me this evening is the property owner, Mr. Ardalon Mozy, and Randy Chapman, the civil engineer. And both are here to respond to any questions that you may have. We won't be making them a part of the presentation unless you have questions. So what started out as an 11-home development project, and by the way, this is for-sale product, it's not rental housing, it's not apartments that you've seen a lot of over the last year. We came in with an 11-home project that was originally endorsed by staff, but in our evaluation, in an effort to minimize the use of large retaining walls, we reduced the number of homes to 10. And you've heard from staff why the design of the subdivision is as it is. There was originally some thought about flag lots, but flag lots tend to create problems between neighbors, which unfortunately I haven't encountered, but others have. Mr. Ardalon thought that the aesthetics would be improved with fewer and smaller walls and he wanted a project that his neighborhood would support. And Mr. Ardalon has reached out to his neighbors on a few occasions, most recently holding a meeting at the property just a couple of weekends ago. A handful of neighbors stopped by to say hello and had a discussion with Mr. Ardalon. All questions were answered and it was our impression from the discussions with the project neighbors, was that the project fit in with the neighborhood, was fine, it was addressing drainage issues that some of these homes on the northern boundary have experienced over the years. This project will alleviate those problems. And this project was designed with the intent to blend in with the surrounding neighborhood on all sides. The density is consistent with that, the house sizes are as well. And care was given to strategically place single-story homes to minimize view impacts. We've also added, the typical ratio is 60/40, two-story to one-story, but we, this is a 50/50 mix, I think that's important to point out. The layout was focused on ensuring a wide setback from the homes backing up to our property and the homes along the eastern boundary were plotted to ensure reasonable setback was in place for the homes behind it. And the driveway into the project is sited so as to not be visible to the neighbors to the north and Lynn Road to the south, it's down below. As I mentioned earlier, the storm drain infrastructure and other improvements will immediately and positively mitigate impacts from flooding the neighbors to the north, which they experience whenever it rains, literally whenever it rains. The project before you is in compliance with the general plan low-density designation. And just as another piece of information, the future general plan that has been circulated through the proposed land use designation in the future's neighborhood low, this too would be consistent with that. And the zoning applied to the property meets and exceeds all the RPD's development standards, including building height, setbacks, and the doubling and tripling in some instances of the minimum usable open space requirements. The MND has fully evaluated the project's impact on the environment. It did, in fact, identify a couple of potentially significant environmental impacts, but mitigation measures have been implemented with the idea of eliminating or reducing those impacts and they will be incorporated into the project. We request your indulgent with respect to two draft conditions. The first relates to construction phasing. Condition number 48 now asks that we grade and build all the homes at one time. We can certainly grade it all at one time. We just ask to allow for two phases and it's really just kind of a stopgap measure in the event of, I don't know, the economy collapsing or if project financing becomes an issue. What we're willing to accept in, as a modification to the current condition is allowing for two phases of construction of the homes with a maximum of a six-month gap in between each phase, so that we have time to figure out if any of these issues do pop up and how we deal with it. The second condition we request some modification to is condition number 58 concerning driveway grades. The plans are currently, as shown, are consistent with this condition. However, as you, when you go out into the field and you start construction, things tend to change and we may need a gradient that's a little greater than 7%, which is what this condition confines us to now. But we want to have some flexibility, which I believe the municipal code allows. There's a standard plate 6-1 that would allow for an increase and we would accept the condition to read as, it says comply with standard plate 6-1 or that the driveway shall be constructed in accordance with city driveway criteria, something like that, we'd be fine with that. With that, we are in full agreement with staff and accept the remaining 164 conditions as written. And in conclusion, we ask for your support tonight and approve these project entitlement requests. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, sir. Quick consult, do you want us to change two things right now? Do we address that or?
You can certainly address it with staff and them while they're still up in another microphone.
All right, well, let's have, should I do it now or should I have questions?
Whatever, yeah, questions first.
Let's have everybody ask questions first. Anybody have any questions on the applicant? Commissioner McMahon, please.
I do want to know what's on the side of the private road that doesn't have the housing, how wide it is, what kind of vegetation you're looking at?
I'm going to ask Randy Chapman, our civil engineer, to, he can give you the particulars.
So it's about a 10-foot wide strip, if I recall. It might not be exactly 10, it's roughly 10, it might be 9, it might be 11, but kind of in that range. And Commissioner Ling, to kind of clarify a question you had as well. The reason that that slopes the way it does is because everything's being pushed to that side of the road specifically for stormwater treatment. So there will be bio-swell type material down there as well. So I hope that answers the question. I can't speak to the specifics of the landscape, but I know there's landscaping along that edge.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Ling?
Couple of questions, actually, follow-up, Mr. Chapman. The, so the intent would be to use that landscape area between the adjacent residences and the north side of the roadway as retention?
Not retention, bioretention.
Bioretention, okay, so just a treatment?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, so first flush?
Exactly.
Got it, okay. And then the other question I had, and as I was digging into the site plan a little bit more, I apologize for not digging into it before now, is there's some lighting depicted on there?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that going to be more of a city standard or is that going to be private standard?
You know, I can't speak to that specifically.
Okay, because you're going to get a lot of requests for shielding.
Sure, sure. And then, you know, since, just one more, one more thing on, one more thing to your earlier comment as well, I just wanted to bring up. The intent is for that road to cross slope at 2%. So that's the general idea.
So a rough grading plan?
Exactly.
Got it.
Mozy, come up here.
No, we'll go back to staff in a minute.
Yes, my name is Mozy Ardalon, I'm the property owner. When we had the neighborhood meeting over there, we invited, we mailed letters to all the neighbors. They came very supportive of the property development. Two questions came up. One, that did not want big plants, that came up right now. And, you know, two, it was just a question, just what's going to happen over there. But specifically, one neighbor asked, please don't plant anything tall because we have some view and we don't want that to be taken away. Plus, what will the roots do to, some of them have retaining walls and so forth. So that's something that, you know, Public Works or whoever, that we have to decide what's best for the neighbors and for this property.
Perfect.
Thank you, that's the answer I was hoping for.
Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you Chair Buss. Mr. Cohen, I just wanted you to kind of clarify the two things that you're looking to possibly modify. So number 48 was, you want to do it in two phases and you say it the way that you want, just want to make sure I have it clear.
Yeah, we want to be able to construct the homes in two phases. We would be willing to accept a condition that reads with no more than six months in between the end of the first phase and start of construction on the second phase.
Okay, and then 58 was the criteria?
Yeah. The concern with 58 is basically just flexibility. That city standard plate 6-1 allows for steeper driveways with the transitions. So we're just requesting to be allowed to match that plate if needed.
Okay, I don't know if that's enough information for the wording of a potential issue to come up, but we'll find out.
I think it's just referencing that plate as what we would, you know, live up to or something that's per city standards is also perfectly fine.
But aside from those things, applicant's in agreement with all the rest of the terms and conditions?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Just really quick, I think we're going to work with staff to ensure that we have a understanding, a clear understanding for both you as decision-makers tonight and the applicant on what that condition would read.
Vice Chair Newman, do you have any questions, sir, of the applicant?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, then we will be moving on to public comments. We have one public speaker this evening. This speaker will have five minutes. Susan Zander, please come forward and please state your city of residence.
Yes, hi, I'm Susan Zander. My city of residence is Newbury Park. And I'm one of the residents on the road there on Rivendell Circle that's adjacent to this empty lot that's going to, where the project is going to be. And I have communicated with some of my neighbors as well. I'm very pleased actually to hear all the careful planning and consideration that's going on. I don't think myself or others are particularly opposed to it. It seems reasonable, it's a big lot there, it's a good location to build. I think our main concern, at least mine and hearing others' feedback, is that we, I know I purchased my property with, part of the cost of it was because there was a view. And it's something that I've loved about that home. I see the mountains and it's peaceful and I sit in my yard and this is going to change everything. It's not the same peacefulness when a whole development and a road goes in behind me and cars and, some of the houses are going to be two-story, some one-story. And I was very concerned because of the loss of view. And also I was concerned about my privacy because if there's a house sitting that's in a higher land than me, that they're going to be looking right down in my yard and I not only lose my view, but I lose my privacy. But it seems like they're setting the houses back far enough that they're not going to be looking right in my yard, I'm hoping. However, depending on the placement of the houses, whether my view is going to be completely blocked or, you know, maybe partially blocked and still leave me some of the mountains for which I bought the property for, to be able to enjoy, you know, depending whether it's a two-story home directly behind me or a one-story and if it's catty corner a little and gives me some space between the homes and I can still see, you know, I'm just sort of asking, I guess, for consideration. And all of us, I think, love that particular tract because we have that mountain views or had. And the tree, I would say what's being talked about just to put my two cents in on that tree on the corner over there that you're taking out, it needs to go. It's just, it's just a dying, it looks like, it may have been an oak tree at one point, but it just looks like a bush at this point, it's just mostly dead. So, you know, no loss there. But as I was saying, I guess those are my main concerns. Let me see if I think of anything else. I'm glad to hear that they'll be bringing the grade down to the level of Lynn Road. It's still going to go up from our homes, but maybe not quite as bad if they level it off a little bit. And I was kind of hoping they'd level it to our level rather than to Lynn Road. Then again, that would keep us from losing our views. Let's see if there was anything else. Concerned, of course, I know it's inevitable that we're going to have construction noises. I would hope that they would at least consider the hours and where they place lights, you know, street lights to be shining right in our windows. Most of us have bedrooms at the back of the house and the lights will be disturbing. back of the house, and the lights will be disturbing. I think that's, those are my main points. Yes, I guess I think that's it. Thank you for all the wonderful questions and carefulness about the planning. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mrs. Zander. All right, that was our last speaker, so we'll move on to staff for follow-up comments.
I'll begin with response to the conditions of approval. Yes, we can certainly modify the conditions of approval to do it in two phases with a maximum gap of six months, and we'll work on the language to get that clear. We'll work with our Public Works Department to get the language worked out. And as far as condition number 58, exceeding the 7% maximum gradient, we can also work with that. That condition of approval itself can be modified because it can go up to 15% as we mentioned earlier for the grades, so not an issue. And then I'd like to respond to Commissioner Link's comment regarding lighting for the project. We don't have a specific photometric lighting plan at the moment. However, that private road, that cul-de-sac, would have light fixtures along the southern portion of the road, with one light fixture on the northeast corner where that cul-de-sac ends. However, staff would also implement other standards to have downward shielded lighting, so it could reduce any kind of impacts, lighting impacts to surrounding properties. And then, as far as the comments from the neighboring resident, as far as setbacks go, yeah, the project does comply with all the minimum setback requirements. Some lots, at the end of the cul-de-sac, do provide a greater rear yard setback, but the very minimum they had to provide 20 feet. And then also, as I mentioned earlier, we try to implement certain design techniques to reduce those visual impacts by providing, you know, a variation in roof lines, pitch roofs, so that way you don't get a box out there that would then further impede their... Although we don't protect views, public views of any mountain, or in this case, the mountains to the north, we do implement some design criteria through our precise plan of design guidelines to reduce those impacts. And then they mentioned lowering the grade of the building pads. If we do more grading on the property, it's going to require more truck trips, more export of soil, and we want to reduce the amount of grading on the property to the maximum extent feasible. And right now, we have approximately 8,000 cubic yards of export, so we want to limit that. We don't want to increase it any further. So that's staff's response for some of the comments that were provided.
Just following up on that last bit before I release to everyone else. My understanding is, is that it's going to be graded down, and then there's like a berm, but the pads themselves are going to be lower in height than the Lynn Road. Is that, did I misunderstand that?
They are, but it isn't going to be a significant grade change. Yeah, it's not going to be like, you're going to have a drop of, you know, 15 feet or something like that. We're going to, you know, the design techniques are, one, to reduce the size of the manufactured slopes that can create more visual impacts, because we have also specific guidelines and standards for grading adjacent to roads. But then you have a maximum two-to-one slopes for manufactured slopes, and then, you know, again, as I mentioned earlier, we're limiting the amount of export. We had to go out there, and, not we, but as part of the project goes with the grading operations, you want to limit the amount of grading on the site, and the lower the pad goes, the more grading you're going to propose on the property, so we're going to limit that.
Copy that. All right, I will do any of my... Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair Bus. I just kind of wanted to clarify what Ms. Zander was asking and what you kind of pointed out. A lot of people may pay extra what they think for views restrictions, but my understanding is want to make sure that the city code doesn't have something different, is we can't protect a right unless it's either a city code or an HOA rule, and neither of those apply in this instance, correct?
That is correct, and although the applicant is going to be required to provide CCNRs to establish an HOA on the property, nothing has been proposed on the project to that effect, to limit the height of the structures, other than what we've applied so far, the 20-foot, 25-foot maximum height, so they don't go above that. But other surrounding properties don't have an HOA that I'm aware of that would have any kind of other requirement similar to that.
I know, it's always a tough thing, because people think they're paying extra, and a tough thing is there may not be a rule that protects that. Second, kind of a procedural question. I know before we've done applications where we've actually come up with a language of a modified condition on the spot. It sounds like we're going to do this subject to a further language later on, so I guess the question is how we'll be approving or not approving that.
I would actually like to try to work through the condition tonight to make it simpler for applicant and for you as decision-makers. So for 48, which is a phasing, I would propose, as Mr. Cohen stated, that it would read, again, number 48, phasing, "The project shall be graded and constructed in two phases with no more than six months between the end of the first construction phase and beginning of the second construction phase."
Excuse me, Mr. Heer. I think what your intent is, though, is to grade in one phase, and I think that should be put in there, is it needs to be graded in one phase.
I think it'd be nigh impossible to build the road without grading first, correct? Tough to sell houses if you can't get them.
So then, to be clear, the project shall be graded in one phase, and construction shall be permitted to be in two phases with no more than six months between the end of the first phase of construction and beginning of the second phase of construction. All right, so that would be for number 48. And for 58, I'm sorry, is it 58? And I apologize to staff for this, because I don't know how to answer, but is, we heard earlier that we had a plate number standard six dash one. Is that an appropriate plate to your knowledge at this time?
Yes, we have plate six dash one in the city road standards.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have a question on that point.
Vice Chair Newman, I recognize you. Please speak.
Thank you. Mr. Contreras referenced allowing driveways up to 15% grade, and I believe we've had other cases where that was the case. The condition 58, as it's currently written, references some part of the municipal code. I don't know what the specific reference says, but that says 7%. So my question is, what is the guiding, or what is the authoritative reference here? Is it 15% or 7%?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Newman, the code section that's referenced pertains to non-residential projects, so the driveway grades could not exceed 7% in a commercial or industrial-type project. Standard plate six dash one allows up to 15% for residential driveways, and that's what we're referencing.
Okay, so then, I guess this is a question for Mr. Heer. Then would the rewrite of section 58 would pull out the existing reference and then replace that in section six dash, or plate six one, which would allow driveway of up to 15% grade? Is that correct?
That would be correct, yes. It would be plate six dash one.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Chair Bus, my only other question is to make sure the applicant then goes up and officially agrees with that.
Yeah, we'll let them do that as soon as we get them to rebuttal phase here.
So then for 58, it would be driveway and parking lot grades. "The driveway and parking lots shall be designed as depicted on grading within the project plan set, date stamped August 12, 2020. The driveways should not exceed a grading of what is permitted, of 15%, which is permitted under plate number six dash one." And with the commission's approval, if we need to modify that slightly, we have the intent, but we might want to modify the wording slightly just as we're making it up here. But it would have that same intent where they can follow up to plate six dash one, if that's okay with you.
All right, so I just want to follow up with any other commissioners, if they have any questions. I think we're good, then let's go back to the applicant. First, let's make sure that you guys are comfortable with the two alterations that we're asking about. I'll see if anyone else has any questions.
Hi, this is Mozzie Ardalon again, the property owner. We do accept what was just discussed on the two items, and if I may address the beautiful lady sitting here. We checked that the day that we were there, I forgot the name of the people that came by, your neighbors. With the dropping of the grade, and as far as back as the homes sit, and the blue that you saw there showed part of the land, the homes are actually going to be smaller. And currently, you have to look up to see the mountains, and I don't think it's going to, well, I don't think it's going to be in effect, because the houses sit so far back, and they're going to be lowered. So hopefully it won't be any impact. Yeah. One other comment that could be an issue that we received was a young lady stopped by and wanted a street named after her. Seriously. So I said, no, it wasn't you. So I said, to be fair, maybe we should tell the neighbors, put your names in a hat, and we will draw a name. And I don't know what's the procedure to picking a name for private streets, but that was a request that we received.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions of the applicant before we proceed? I got one, and it may be tangential, but I'm just curious. The private road, you're going to have an HOA. Is Lot 9 responsible for maintaining and repairing that private road, and how do you do that? Yes, please. For public record, I am just curious about this. I thought a lot about Lot 9, as you can tell.
You might be the buyer of Lot 9, who knows? Thank you, Tom Cohen, Thousand Oaks, and your question was actually Mr. Ardalon's question to me last week. It's, we'll have to carve that out as we draft the CCNRs, because it doesn't make sense that they're going to be responsible for the maintenance of the entire road. But they will be held to other standards and requirements as it relates to, you know, how the house is utilized, you know, no subdivision, colors, height, you know, all the things that go into CCNRs. But in terms of the ongoing maintenance of that private driveway, it doesn't make any sense. So there'll be a carve-out in the actual CCNRs to address that, because you're right, that's a lot to put on that one property owner.
Yeah, all right, appreciate it. Thank you.
You got it.
All right, I believe that we can go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. And I'll go ahead and open up the floor for a motion and/or discussion. Commissioner Link?
I'd make a motion to adopt a resolution approving tentative track map 2018-70478, residential plan development 2018-70479, oak tree permit 2018-70480, and mitigated negative declaration 2020-70459 based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the resolution as amended this evening.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Link. Commissioner Lanson, please.
Thank you, Commissioner, our Chair Bus. I've driven by this property for 21 years on my way to work, and I'm so happy to see that something hopefully is planned that looks as good as it does, and thank you, Mr. Ardalon, for taking responsibility for this process, reaching out to the public, doing something that really looks like it's a nice benefit for the community. Ms. Zander, I think also it'll hopefully help your property values, by the way, in terms of having a nice new project nearby. So thank you very much for investing in the city and doing a really nice project. And I support the motion.
Vice Chair Newman, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too will support this project. We're never happy to see oak trees get taken out anywhere, especially if they're in reasonably good health, as these two are. But I do want to emphasize that per city guidelines, they will be replaced with six trees, so three times more than what was there, and it sounds like they will be on the same property. So with that, I'm happy to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, and with that, I say we go ahead and go to a vote.
Commissioner Lanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Bus?
Aye.
And that motion carries five to zero.
Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. Thank you very much. Congratulations, gentlemen, and good luck with your project. All right. We will be moving on to 7B, so will the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7B, Development Permit, Major Modification, DPMJ 2020-70704, to allow the reduction in parking requirement by more than 10% to accommodate a change in use from furniture store to retail use within an existing commercial development with no new development proposed. Located at 2800 Camino dos Rios, the applicant is Hillcrest Garden Center.
Thank you very much. I now address Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, I will have to recuse myself, because I do have a work relationship with the property management company for Hillcrest Garden Center, so I will be leaving the meeting for a while.
Yeah, thank you. We'll give Commissioner McMahon a moment to depart before we begin, but I believe presenting on behalf of staff is once again Senior Planner, Carlos Contreras.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is a request for a parking reduction at 2800 Camino dos Rios, more commonly known as the Hillcrest Garden Center. As far as the specifics for the request, the applicant is requesting a reduction of the municipal code parking requirements by up to 23.5%. This parking reduction request is in order to accommodate the conversion of an existing furniture store to general retail use. There is no proposed development included in this proposed project. As far as Planning Commission review, when staff typically gets a request for a parking reduction, staff can approve those in the staff level, administrative level, by director approval, if it's up to 10%. Once you go beyond that, based on the municipal code, the only authority to approve that would be the Planning Commission, which is why the project is before you tonight. However, the applicant would be required to demonstrate a parking supply can meet the actual demand based on operational hours, functions, and peak use for the site. The applicant did this by demonstrating through a parking study provided July 13th of 2021. A little bit of background on the subject site. The development was constructed in the 1980s, and it was approved by the Planning Commission for a shopping center. They approved the site with 149 parking spaces, and they required that the applicant recorded deed restriction prohibiting medical office use, most probably because they wanted to reduce the kind of impacts on the property based on medical office uses. However, in April 8th of 1991, there was a modification to the development permit, and the director approved a request to allow medical office uses on the subject property. Through that admin approval, the deed restriction was rescinded, and medical office uses were no longer restricted on the property. Since '91, not much activity happened as far as medical office and other retail uses. That furniture store remained, you know, that furniture store is approximately 20,000 square feet. In 2015, Roger Dunn established their use on the property. They took up about 7,940 square feet of that existing furniture store building. That left 12,060 square feet, or 10,438 square feet net, for the furniture store use that's existing on the site today. So as far as the project site goes, here is an aerial photograph of the subject property. I outlined and read the subject site. To the west, you have an existing commercial development. That development to the west there, the gas station, the motel, the Denny's Building, and the El Pollo Loco, those buildings were constructed in the 1960s through a different development permit. And then the subject property that's in question tonight, you have medical office uses along the northern portion of the property. You have the furniture store building indicated in yellow. Roger Dunn is immediately north of that yellow polygon where I indicate the furniture store. And you have different points of access to the subject property. You have one point of access off of Camino dos Rios, which is a shared access through the property that bisects it, that leads from Camino dos Rios over to West Hillcrest Drive. And you also have two other points of access along the eastern portion of the property from West Hillcrest Drive. You have the 101 off-ramp there to the southwest. And so this is just to give you an idea of what the lay of the land is for this proposed parking reduction project before you tonight. Oh, and I wanted to mention, you also have commercial uses across Hillcrest and across Camino dos Rios, so. Here is a photograph of the subject site. Right there, you have the existing 20,000-square-foot building. On the right-hand side, you have existing office uses to the north of the Roger Dunn and furniture store building. and furniture store building. And so, as I mentioned earlier, the, the request tonight is to allow for retail uses within that furniture store lease space. As far as the project details go, as mentioned earlier, the project, the proposed project involves authorizing a park, parking reduction to accommodate additional retail uses within the existing 10,438 square foot furniture store. The site currently provides 146 parking spaces while the municipal code requires 163. Please note that page two of the staff report incorrectly indicates that the existing furniture store, or sorry, the existing commercial shopping center would require 184 spaces. The applicant's request to convert the furniture store to retail would require 191 spaces per the municipal code, resulting in a 45 space shortfall, or rather a 23.5 parking space reduction. Based on the parking analysis prepared for the actual parking demand for the site, it was indicated that 137 spaces would be required, resulting in a nine parking space surplus. This is, again, is based on the existing 146 spaces provided on site. It should be noted that city staff did express some concern initially with, with the proposal, specifically pertaining to the parking count data and field investigations within the initial parking study that was provided in December of 2020. The initial study cited parking activity details from November of 2020 during the height of the COVID pandemic. Due to the reduced parking demand resulting from the stay-at-home order, staff indicated that, that the applicant should present information that is more, that more accurately represents the actual parking demand on the subject property. Based on that input, the applicant submitted a couple of updates to the parking study, one in March of 2021 and the other in July of 2021, which is the study that was provided in the staff report. They updated that study because the state began to lift pandemic restrictions and commercial centers began to see more patrons on the property. As far as the parking demand goes, this table here, which was provided in the, in the staff report, indicates the, the municipal code requirements for the existing uses on the subject property. As indicated here, you have professional office, you know, 11,642 square feet. You have medical office existing. You have general commercial. You have the existing furniture store at 10,438 square feet. You also have educational uses and also restaurant uses. Based on the uses and the parking ratios indicated here, it, it looks like it would be 163 parking spaces that would be required based on the municipal code for current existing uses. If you were to convert that 10,438 square foot furniture store to general commercial use, the total parking required for the site would jump to 191 based on the municipal code requirements. But then we get into the actual parking study and what the actual demand is. Based on information provided in that parking study by Walker Consultants, it appears that the, the site would require 137 parking spaces during the weekday on peak demand. And on weekends, 103 spaces. The reason why the weekend would require less than the weekday is because you have those medical and professional office uses that wouldn't be activated during the evenings or on weekends. So, you know, staff does receive, staff did receive the parking study and provided a site analysis. However, staff did visit the site just to verify not only the parking studies field investigation, but our own investigation. And so staff visited the site on July 13th of 2021 at 2:00 PM. And here on the top left, you see a picture of the site looking to the southeast. There's the Wendy's drive-through building and you can see there's available parking provided on the site. On the top right-hand side, you have the existing Roger Dunn building and that furniture store. Again, this is the, the, the parking condition and supply during that time at 2:00 PM. The lower left-hand side, you have a shot looking towards the southwest, towards that Roger Dunn building, or Roger Dunn lease space. And again, this is all demonstrating the, the supply on the property at 2:00 PM on a weekday. And on the bottom right-hand side, I photographed the office uses along the western and northern portion of the property. A little bit more, a little bit more activity shown on the bottom right. And then staff also took a picture of the site on July 15th. It was a Thursday at 5:00 PM. And so on the top left, you have the subject property, again, looking at Wendy's and parking availability and supply. And then you have the top right, you have the Roger Dunn lease space and that's looking towards the south. And again, it's, it appears to be somewhat vacant. And then you have, on the bottom, you have the, the office uses. This is down that shared driveway access towards West Hillcrest Drive. And again, there seems to be more supply on the property. As far as public correspondence goes, staff did provide public hearing notice to property owners within 500 feet. We did install a large sign since January of 2021 indicating the proposed parking reduction. And the applicant did update their sign based on the current hearing tonight to make sure that anybody interested in the project would be able to make it to the hearing and provide their comments. And then as far as public correspondence, to date, staff has not received any on the proposal. So that's as far as we have as far as the correspondence goes. And then as far as the environmental review and sequel analysis provided on the project, the project is actually exempt based on Class 1, Section 301 of the California Environmental Quality Act, being that the request involves a parking reduction to accommodate a new retail use within an existing commercial building with no new development proposed. So staff determined that this is a negligible expansion of the use. And also none of the six exceptions to the exemption apply for this project. In conclusion, based on the analysis of the project, the project is consistent with the general plan land use designation of commercial. It is compatible with surrounding commercial uses. Commercial uses are allowed in the C2 zone, so office retail use is consistent with the C2 zone and also retail use consistent with the C2 zone. The project meets all the city's standards, codes, policies, and guidelines inclusive of the parking reduction request. Conditions of approval have been applied to the project to minimize impacts to surrounding properties. And the, the project would not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. That concludes, oh, sorry, the staff recommends the, the planning commission approved the development permit, major modification 2027-0704 based on the parking analysis and the findings and the, and subject to the conditions of approval in the draft resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Senior Planner Contreras. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions about this? Commissioner Link, please.
I have questions. I also have concerns. So maybe I should reserve my concerns for later. The surveys were conducted in 2009 and again in 2021, multiple times in 2021, but 2009, we were coming out of what has been termed as the Great Recession. How confident are we in that data from then?
Yeah, so part of the parking, sorry, the parking study does have the data of 2009 and from, and, and the applicant consultant can explain in more detail. But they wanted to provide that information because that gave us a little bit more conservative parking counts in that time because it was more, there was more occupancy on the site. However, when they submitted their parking study in 2020 and 21, they really didn't have the necessary data to give us the more conservative count. So they used 09 as a comparative measure. But I'll let Walker Consultants, the applicant consultant, be more specific as to the methodology and the information provided.
Right, so the reason I ask is because the base parking ratios that were used to, to actually put together the 2021 analysis were from 2009. So just, that, and that is, that is correct.
I believe so. And again, I'll, I'll let the consultant, parking consultant.
Okay.
Explain further detail.
Yeah. I think that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Link. Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair Bus. Mr. Contreras, if the parking, if there's excess cars, where do they end up parking? If there is not enough space in that, in that area? Do they go to the property to the west? Is it where on the street? Where would they end up going?
You know, based on staff site investigation, I mean, this specific project is being part for the specific location, right, which I showed the property lines and I showed that they have medical, medical office buildings to the north. So that's specific to this project, the parking count as part, as far as the parking requirements go for the municipal code and also parking demand based on the parking study. Staff did verify and notice that, based on our site investigation, that, you know, vehicles did use the other commercial properties to the west. So we concluded that perhaps traditionally people that, patrons that visit the site, if they can't find parking at, at the Roger Dunn Shopping Center, they would park, you know, at the, at the shopping centers to the west. We didn't find any kind of restriction to do so. We did find, again, that shared access agreement that bisects the property. We did investigate the other developments constructed in 1960, but we didn't find any kind of indication that there was any restriction of shared parking use. We did find one old document that indicated that there was, there would be some shared parking agreement. That, it was that, it's that building where there's a coffee shop existing right now, just west of that El Pollo Loco. They had a shared parking agreement with the property to the south where you have that motel, that everybody would be able to use the parking there.
As to a shared parking agreement, the, the property to the west, do they have excess parking above and beyond what they normally would need?
I don't have that information. I don't know if they have any parking deficiencies at the moment. But again, just based on our staff site investigation, it seemed like there was enough supply on the property.
And if they had a shared parking agreement, that wouldn't violate any city code or permit?
No, it wouldn't. And again, that, that agreement wasn't included as a condition of approval to that, to that development permit of 1960, I think it's 69, but they did have an agreement that was executed after the fact.
Okay. I haven't been here that long, but long enough that I don't think I've ever handled a situation where we have a hypothetical use of a property in terms of what you're looking at, the potential parking needs. Why is it we're going to that as opposed to waiting until they have an actual new use of the property to figure out what would make sense?
Well, because the approval under that original 1980s development permit, the only use allowed to meet their parking, municipal code parking requirements was to leave it as a furniture store, right? So in order for them to convert this into a retail use or a more quote unquote intense land use, we have to verify that the actual parking supply that's on the property would meet that demand. And, you know, that's why staff, you know, has the, a parking study to rely on, but we also had our own site investigation. But we also included a condition of approval on the project that if, in the future, let's say they get these, these retail operators and there is a parking issue, they would have to come up with another updated parking analysis to demonstrate that there actually aren't going to be impacts or spillover onto adjacent properties.
Okay, so that ability to have that reevaluation would still exist as to whether or not that parking situation was still appropriate, given whatever use is ultimately done?
That is correct, and that's why we specifically added that condition of approval to the project.
Okay, you know, I, I'm always concerned about looking at things and does it set a precedent for other areas in the property to say, hey, you gave them X, Y, and Z? How is that not going to be an issue here then?
Well, through staff evaluation, I mean, we looked at the history of the property. As, as I mentioned earlier, there was a deed restriction to prohibit medical office uses. That was lifted based on the parking analysis that was done at that time in the 1990s, right? And so what, what we've done now is since we have an applicant requesting a parking reduction, you know, by effectively converting that furniture store that has less municipal code parking requirements than a retail use, we wanted to make sure that we applied the correct conditions. In this case, adding the conditions of approval that would allow for reevaluation and also restricting more intense uses into that specific lease space. So you wouldn't get a restaurant use that has, or a gym, or a fitness facility that would have a more intense and more impact on parking supply. So we, we tried to evaluate the, the project as best as possible using a parking study, as I mentioned earlier, with parking counts that were taken during the pandemic. They also used the 2009 parking study done a long time ago with a different situation, right, as far as parking supply and demand goes, with a different retail component at that time, and I'll let Walker Consultants elaborate more on that. But I mean, we, we evaluate the project and we use our, that analysis on the parking study, our field investigation, and apply the appropriate, the appropriate conditions of approval. Again, and if the study demonstrates that they have enough, enough supply to meet the demand, which they have demonstrated that to us, we would be recommending approval with specific conditions on that project. So that way, it doesn't end up having to be a precedent setting matter. Again, we, we evaluate every project on a case-by-case basis, and this is how we evaluated this project specifically.
Last question, it's going to be more probably for the applicant is I, I've noticed for a lot of hearings, lots of different people, there's some, sometimes some criminal activity that happens in around that parking lot area that is a concern in terms of lighting and other things. Again, I'll probably ask the applicant, but is there anything else we can do to help the public in terms of possible criminal activity that happens back in that area?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what kind of purview we have to add further requirements. I'll let Planning Manager Steve Kearns answer that.
Perhaps the applicant can respond to that. They can get private security or something on site if it is an issue out there, but it's not something we can impose as a condition.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant. Thank you.
Vice Chair Newman, do you have any questions for the staff?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Contreras, for this report. Following up on a couple of points Commissioner Lanson raised. Firstly, with regard to very successful business, we all hope for that, that it comes in here. Commissioner Lanson was asking basically a one-off case where if someone drives into the lot and because the business is successful, they need to go somewhere else. I'm asking a longer-term question about process. What if it turns out over time that this is an ongoing problem? There is Condition 14 as part of this application that describes the process, but I didn't fully follow the way that works. So my question is, can you boil that down and describe how, what recourse another tenant would have or the city would have if it turns out that the parking reduction here is, turns out to be insufficient?
Commissioner Newman, a great question. If you can give me a couple of minutes so I can just reread that condition of approval and get back to you on that?
Sure. It may take a minute.
If I may, Chair and Vice Chair Newman, we are familiar with this condition in a little bit because we have issues. Mainly, we, we look at these with the more fast food situations such as Starbucks or something of that nature. And, and again, just for Commissioner Lanson's questions and your questions, the code does permit, does permit us, as planning commissioners, for you to, to review this type of situation. So as is noted in the staff report, there is a 10% reduction that's permitted by the Director of Community Development. But if it's anything more than that, then there's this burden that is placed on the applicant to present to you as commissioners. But under Code Section 942403, it does permit you to make this evaluation based on evidence that's presented to you. So that's why you have the testimony from Mr. Contreras and staff, plus also the various traffic reports. What this commission, what this condition number 14 does is when we look at problems with parking and, and problems with traffic, it's about the traffic impact. And so we, we look at it as a nuisance. And so to abate the nuisance, you have to figure out how do you, how do you, one, notify the applicant that they have this duty to, to abate the nuisance? And then two, what, what is a process to address that? And it's, it's very difficult when you have, for example, Starbucks for, for just a hypothetical example, where they start pouring out into the street. And so this condition is, is for that type of situation where the parking is now overflowing and there's no parking in other locations and therefore it spills out into this, into the street and creates a concern for traffic or concern for public safety of some kind. So that is why 14 is in there and that would be the mechanism if it got to that point where you would have staff go back in and look at this with the applicant and address abatement of the nuisance if, if one is developed. But again, for the initial foundation, it's based on the traffic studies that are being presented to you and the evidence that's, that those present to you to consider and weigh and then say, if you determine that it shows and merits reduction, then you can make that determination, which is permitted under the code.
So, and, and thank you, Mr. Heer, for that expansion. I guess my first set of questions around Condition 14 are, who has, who has stand- I guess my first set of questions around condition 14 are who has standing to exercise it? Would a member of the public who consistently finds that they go there and can't find a place to park, would they be able to request a review of this?
Yeah, great question. It is, when you talk about nuisances now, you're talking about a public nuisance. And so you have a verified complaint. So what we would do, whether it's code or whether it's someone in planning or an inspector of some kind, they receive complaints and then they have to verify those complaints before you would take the next step and go to this level of intensity where you are meeting with the applicant and going through a process. But yes, it is something in which it can be from anyone who's complaining. And then what we have to do is verify that we don't, for any nuisance that we would have, we don't just say, oh, okay, someone complained, we must go and send, give them a citation. It's actually something in which we investigate. But you are correct, that would be the catalyst for starting that procedure and review.
Okay, so do I understand correctly then that a review could be instigated from the public, from city staff?
Correct.
From tenant, another tenant?
Correct, absolutely correct. What it really happens is when you get a complaint, then we have to verify the complaint. And then this condition is a mechanism for a procedure that staff felt would be a fair, reasonable way of trying to, trying to alleviating a nuisance. And again, the biggest issue goes back to, this is where there's a case where traffic is impacting the streets of staff, not necessarily within the interior of the complex, but into the public streets. And that is where we get that abasement of a nuisance.
Well, the reason I added a tenant in there is, as it happens, I'm a patient of one of the medical practices in this park. And I have heard multiple times from staff at that practice that sometimes non-patients use their parking spaces. So if they do have standing to go complain about it, I mean, I presume they'd go to the landlord first. But if this new use becomes wildly successful and there's additional pressure on parking, I'm just wondering what the process is to review this?
Yeah, and I do not know the lease agreement with applicant and all the tenants, or the owner and the tenants. But sometimes those leases have a guaranteed amount of spaces that are permitted for each business. And then those are articulated through the signage for those spaces in the interior parking lot because tenants are purchasing, if you will, through the lease, a set amount that they're trying to be guaranteed for it.
Okay. Beyond condition 14, another question Commissioner Lance raised was the question of precedent. And he asked if there was a concern about that. Mr. Contreras answered narrowly. His answer was correct, that there is precedent within this property for changing its parking setup. And that's true, and he's done a nice job of outlining the history of that over time. My question is a broader one, citywide. Are we concerned at all that other applicants in the future will say, hey, you gave these guys a 23% reduction in parking? We want that too. We want 30%. We want 40%. Are we opening a can of worms here?
And I think the quick answer is no. And the reason why is because when you go to the Code Section 9-4.2403, that is a set ordinance mechanism to do this process. So the applicant has a burden to show, and that's where we have the traffic reports and the parking studies. The staff has to review it and make an analysis, and staff in this case is recommending approval of this reduction. I will also state that, you know, you don't see this type of reduction too often. I haven't seen one for a while of this magnitude. But nevertheless, it's, this is why the code is written in that way is to say if it's a 10% or less reduction, it can go to the planning director. But if it's more than that, it has to go to the commission because it is more significant. So it's not a precedent, it's more of, we don't see this triggered that often. And so then it goes to, okay, under this code section, there's a process to go in front of you. And they need to establish that, yeah, they can meet their parking needs based on the evidence that's submitted to you tonight.
Okay. I'm asking only because we have heard, hey, you did this for these other guys.
Absolutely, yeah. It's definitely going to be a case-by-case, but this code section does provide a mechanism for all of them. And whether the factors support that or not, that is for you to decide in this case tonight.
Okay. And then the final question I have is with regard to the parking study. There's been a lot of references to the applicant's study. And my question here is, aside from the pictures that I presume Mr. Contreras or someone on staff took very recently, has there been any sort of independent review or assessment of parking situation or of the Walker study by the city?
Great question, Commissioner Newman. There hasn't been any independent study from staff level on the specific site other than what has been provided by the project applicant consultant.
Okay, I'm sure Commissioner Link may have some questions or concerns, as he alluded to, about that. One that I'll raise right now, and we may want to hear from the applicant on this, is the 2009 scenario that Commissioner Link referenced. The study essentially dismissed that and said, yes, it was economically a hard time, but it was a negligible impact on parking. I don't know enough about the parking situation to say that is or isn't true. I know there was a significant decrease in economic activity in 2009. And it would be useful to have some third-party independent view of how valid that is as a starting point in making our decision tonight. Anyway, that's really a comment, not a question. So that's really all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Newman. This is where my layperson bona fides are going to come out because so many pointed questions from my fellow commissioners. But I am not an expert in parking, so I've got some, what may seem like, very pedestrian questions for you. Number one, I am baffled, and was baffled when I read this report, that furniture stores are not considered a retail environment. Can you explain that to me, how we compartmentalize what retail environments are actually retail environments? And what makes a retail environment more retail than a furniture store?
Yes, thank you, Chair Buss. That's a very good question. The staff report alluded to it being more of a warehousing-type situation because that's how it functions, where all the product is typically on the floor. So you're not having areas that are designated as specific separate retail establishments or environments. So it was only, it is a retail establishment. It just has a less parking demand than the general retail.
Oh, you just think there's fewer customers per square foot in an environment like that?
That's the analogy.
So that's, so how many different categories do we have?
That's a very good question, too. There's probably close to 100 categories.
Okay, so we got 100 different categories, and they're asking for a very general retail category. What would fall into that general retail category?
Clothing stores, markets, those type of things, anything. There's several uses that fall within that. Offices are also within the same parking category, but not.
Office buildings would fall into retail?
It falls into that same parking calculation.
So hypothetically, like a law office or a real estate office would fall into retail?
No, it would fall into professional office, my.
So, yeah, clarify.
Yeah, what I'm trying to make, the point I'm trying to make is that there's a parking demand for specific uses within the code. And the 1 per 250 captures a number of uses within the, within.
The reason I'm asking, just so we're clear, is that I'm not clear, much like Mr. Lance said, we're asking for reduction in parking without really understanding what we're granting it for. And I really don't understand what we're granting it for.
Yeah, and the reason it's happening in this approach is that the property owner cannot lease the space for use that doesn't have the appropriate parking calculation or parking supply. So they're asking for reductions so they can attract retail users to their center. Where right now, they can only attract bulk goods and furniture stores.
Furniture stores and stuff like that. Okay, okay, that makes sense to me. Now, the other question I have, which wasn't clear to me from reading this or going out to the site, the number of physical spaces at this site is not changing. Am I incorrect about that? Or is the number of physical spaces changing? Or just changing the designation, which changes the allocation amount that they're requiring, correct?
That is correct. There's 140 spaces out there right now, and they will remain. They're not going to be modified, no development. It's just a matter of changing the use from a furniture store to retail, which has a higher parking requirement than furniture store.
All right, so those were my two dumb questions I had to ask. I appreciate your patience. We will move on now to the applicant or the applicant's representative, I believe. Please state your name and city residence for the record, and I believe you will have 15 minutes.
Good evening. Mark Sellers, resident of Thousand Oaks. We're here to basically ask for some relaxation of the city's parking requirements that were set a long time ago. And that's basically because we have a vacant space that we can't lease to anybody. Furniture businesses are struggling, and the property manager can talk about that a little bit. I was, we're in a situation where the internet is showing that our parking standards are way out of whack. I was walking the dog just this morning. In one block, I saw an Amazon truck stop at six different houses and deliver items to the front door. That's the situation that retail is facing today. And I think the parking standards are even tougher because I have office clients that are thinking of tearing down their office structures because the stay-at-home, the remote workplace is starting to take over the general office and corporate effort to downsize and get people to stay at home. In fact, I just was reading this morning that something like 69% of the people that adopted a dog in the last couple of years say they're going to go to a different job if they can't stay at home with their dog. So we're entirely entering a new era here with what's happening with parking requirements and parking standards. So what I was told a long time ago by Rick Caruso that it's far worse to have an empty store than an empty space in your parking structure. And he's a fairly smart guy. He knows what he's doing. So we're here asking for a little relaxation. We hired Walker Consultants and expert in this area, and they can go into their qualifications. But basically, we're trying to say is that this space, and it was mentioned that, why don't we have a use for it? It took us a year to get to this hearing. No way are you going to find a tenant for a space and say, wait a year until I get a word back from the planning commissioner on whether you can go in or not. That's just not going to happen. So we're here tonight to ask for general retail so the property manager has a chance to find a tenant for that space, rather than just, let's roll the dice and come back and hopefully get the planning commission to approve it. So that's the goal here. And with that, I want to turn it over to the property manager to talk a little bit about his struggles in trying to find a furniture store that wants that space. In fact, the space is empty now because the mattress store that was in there probably hadn't paid rent for almost over a year. So it's been a real struggle, that space, even though we had a use, furniture use in there, they were struggling. And with that, Mr. Ortiz. And then finally, Walker has a team here. I'll let them introduce themselves and go over their comments. And it was mentioned about the recession of 2009. I know that recession very well. That recession was caused by subprime loans. And one of our clients is a mortgage loan insurance company, and we went through that quite well. Retail really wasn't impacted. The housing market was impacted. The lending market was impacted, but that was really a subprime loan issue.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Michael Ortiz, Calabasas, California. We've managed the property for over 18 years. And during those 18 years, this large space has been vacant for many years, unfortunately at a time. The furniture industry has basically been hit hard since 2009 and has never really fully recovered. Any furniture tenants that we have been able to get over these 18 years has always gone out of business. And in some of these tenants, I'll be honest with you, have not paid for over two years. We were trying to work it out with them, but it just never happened. So unfortunately, during this time, the city has lost a substantial amount of tax revenue while the building was vacant. In the past, you guys were gracious enough to allow us to rent part of the space to normal retail users. And we were able to find the Roger Dunn store, and they are a great tenant. They've been reliable and successful, and they've been good to us and good to you in terms of tax revenue. We kindly ask you that you help us with this parking permit so that we can fill this space with a regular retail user. On the good news front, Roger Dunn has been so successful in their space that they are willing to expand in the space if you guys approve it. So that would be a wonderful thing to do. And just two quick comments on the criminal activity. Unfortunately, there's a motel there, and that motel customer base is less than desirable. And that has caused problems. Obviously, that spills over to ours. We have hired, though, a security company, and they do random checks throughout the day and throughout the night to, on our side, help as much as we can. And obviously, it's a police issue as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Am I here? Can you hear me? Okay. Hello, my name is Stefan Turov. Thank you, Chair Buss and members of the commission. I'm the principal in charge at Walker. When we did the last study in 2009, we were Walker Parking Consultants. Now we're Walker Consultants in part because of some of the curb management and other changes in mobility and design in parking that have happened the past few years. Again, thank you for having us. I've been a principal there for 17 years. I'm here with my colleague Tanya Schleck, who's also a planner here. She's, we've been working together for four years. And we have Jeff Weckstein, who has really led up a lot of the shared parking research and development on the models and the methodology. He is online. I'm not sure where I'm pointing. Okay, he's out in the ether, but he's here. All three of us work together. Some great questions, some unexpected questions. I'll just say, the past six months, we've worked on parking standards, parking requirements from Beaumont to Beverly Hills, here in Ventura County, Moore Park Carpinteria in the past couple of years. This keeps coming up, you know, we've, we are seeing, the questions about parking requirements, we do see that they tend to be high, not always. But with shared parking, it's about the timing. And we see when we have a commercial center, you know, when you have medical office and restaurant and retail, you have your requirements. We reviewed them. Some of them seemed high, some of them didn't. But once you start piling up the peak on the peak on the peak, then you get a pretty high combined requirement. A number of cities just have a flat requirement for a mixed-use center. Often with, you know, keeping in mind that you might be 20, 30% restaurant, you don't have that. So I guess, you know, I'll let Tanya delve into the study. But we really saw, you know, over the course of several years, consistently, you've had about 50% empty spaces there. You know, typically, when we work with cities, we say, you know, we heard, I will say, you know, concern about crime and activity, you know, empty parking spaces, you know, especially with the homeless, I don't want to say with kids skateboarding, whatever it is, you know, that's an issue. And we do do the design of parking. All these things come together in traffic, transportation, economic development, even safety. So, you know, I'll let Tanya talk about the details. Again, we've worked on so many of these. It's very interesting. We are seeing a clear trend towards reduction in requirements, or at least a look where we say, okay, the city has its requirements. That's the default, that's the standards. But let's look case-by-case where necessary. And certainly, we come in and there are cities or developments where we say, okay, there's no reduction here. But sometimes we say, okay, on a case-by-case basis, there is a reduction here that's justified. And I think that's what our study is showing. So I'll turn it over to Tanya. And Tanya, myself, and Jeff are available for questions.
I'll just provide a brief summary of some of the details. So as was alluded to, we did use 2009 base parking ratios as kind of our baseline. And we did four full days of subsequent counts in November 2020 and then March 2021, and then late May 2021 as we were kind of coming out of the pandemic and things were starting to open and economic activity was picking up again. And when we compared our counts on site with the 2009 base ratios, we found that 2009 base ratios were still the highest. So to be conservative, we went with those highest ratios to do the analysis that you see before you. It's worth noting that our maximum occupancy that we saw in the council It's worth noting that, um, our, our maximum occupancy that we saw in, in the council when we went out there was 53%. Um, so similar to what Carlos and his team saw, you know, we, we did see quite a bit of, um, vacant parking spaces. And so, you know, similar to what Mark alluded to, you know, we think that, um, you know, kind of parking demand with, with the online deliveries, the remote work, it, you know, it will be trending downwards. So, so we do think, um, that using the, the 2009 numbers as a base is, is a conservatively high estimate of, of parking demand. And it's worth noting that the, um, since the 2009 study didn't have, um, the retail space occupied, we did use, um, what is recommended in the International Council of Shopping Centers and Urban Land Institute Shared Parking Model Base Ratio for retail, um, which is based on a, um, you know, mostly auto-oriented suburban, um, high-performing shopping center base ratio. So, so we also think that that is a conservatively high estimate. Um, and so, yeah, as, as you'll see in, in the study, you know, we, we predict that there's adequate parking to accommodate demand during, during our projected peak period. Um, as Stefan alluded to, um, the shared parking allows for uses that peak at different times. Um, and, and the mix of uses that are on the site, um, do have that, you know, those kind of differing peaks um, that allows for, for a lower, um, actual parking needs at during the period of, of, um, peak demand. Yeah, we're happy to take any questions that you have on the study.
Thank you for your presentation. All right. Commissioner Link, I will let you go first, sir.
Uh, actually, for the, first for the, um, I apologize, I'm terrible with names. But, uh, the property manager, Mr. Um, Mr. Ortiz, thank you. When the first survey was conducted in 2009, do you have the occupancy statistics for the center?
I would have to check for you, but from what I remember, uh, the, the big store was empty, I believe, or half-empty. Um, and the most, the offices were probably all occupied at that point in time.
Okay. And then the same question for 2021. Are there any existing vacancies with the center?
Um, there's a few small offices, um, and the, um, the 12,000 square foot.
And the 12,000 square foot, okay. So, uh, going back to 2018, since we all have the benefit of Google Street View, um, the Google Street View is from December 2018. And, uh, as your consultants will tell you, that the parking ratios are actually based on the highest use from December. Because we look at the peak, we're not looking at an average. We want to be able to accommodate when the peak is going to be. So in December of 2018, what was occupied? Was the furniture store still there?
Yes, the furniture store was there.
Okay. And do you have a guess of what the occupancy would be for the rest of the center?
Uh, we were probably at 92%.
92%, okay. So just based on street view, it looks like you have quite a bit more people parked than what the previous. And again, outside of 2009, when we had the recession, and then COVID. Uh, and the, the study notes that we have, uh, that they were taken in May, I believe. And we hadn't gotten to, uh, Ventura County was trailing behind LA County even with our tier status. So, uh, we were still, what, orange instead of yellow back then? And that was prior to reopening on June 15th. So there may still have been a little bit of a, a lag on there as far as, um, uh, excuse me, uh, usage. Uh, are there any offices in there right now that are closed temporarily as, as a result of COVID?
No, no, ironically not. No, we're lucky and grateful on that part.
That's good to hear, actually. Um, let's see here. I do have one question, though, and then it has come up, uh, quite a bit with regard to retail. If general retail is dead, why are, why are we looking to put retail in the shopping center?
Uh, because that's the, the size is such that it's so large that there's no way you're really going to put an office user in there. So our, our feeling is, is that obviously Roger Dunn is the perfect example. You guys granted us that approval. We found them. And now they've done so successful in that, that they now want to expand into that. So we believe that, that there's a high probability, obviously. And we know what there is because we have a deal with Roger Dunn, subject to your approval, that it will be leased to Roger Dunn.
Okay. Uh, since you brought up Roger Dunn, I also noticed that in the parking lot, uh, Roger Dunn actually has spaces marked out.
Yes.
So anecdotally, that would tell me that maybe other uses were parking in what should have been dedicated to Roger Dunn. Is that a fair assessment?
No, they, they just asked for it. That's like, they're, they said that's their standard that they request in all their centers. So we don't have a problem with that. And we've also just, you know, in terms of the office users, we've also dedicated patient parking as well for them, so that we've tried to, you know, accommodate all needs there.
Okay. And then for the consultants.
Thank you.
And I apologize in advance, if you couldn't already tell. I am a registered civil and traffic engineer, uh, the city traffic engineer for the city of Simi Valley. And I was a consultant for 12 years. So I am no stranger to ULI, Parking Generation, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, my, again, my apologies in advance. Uh, it's 2009 when you developed the base parking ratios. Did the parking ratios incorporate occupancy?
Yes, those incorporated. They were like, they were a weighted average based on what we saw during that time, during the 2009 counts.
Okay. And the 2009 counts were not conducted during December?
Uh, no, they were conducted in September, but they were adjusted, um, in the study to accommodate for a time of year.
Okay. Let's see.
Which is a pretty standard practice that we do to bump up, like you said. I'm sorry, sorry. I was going to say, when this, you're right. I mean, the retail use especially, um, bumps up is the peak is December. So typically, we adjust that if we're not able to do the counts in December.
Certainly, right. Let's see. Actually, I think I'm letting you guys off the hook. Uh, just in, just anecdotally to throw this out, my, my ULI calculation for the shared parking actually is 165 spaces. So, uh, the, the base parking ratios are not quite what ULI says. And even if you look at the 85th percentile parking requirements from Parking Generation, they're, they're pretty well off. So, and then this is more of a general comment than a question, but I, I, I hesitate looking at dedicated parking, base parking ratios for a single use as opposed to using more data if available.
If I understand your question, and I'll let Tanya, or I don't know if Jeff can chime in. So there is the model. And typically, we use a model when we model from the ground up. Um, if there is an existing site, um, we count that. We look at the ratios actually being generated. And then for, uh, future new uses, like a retail, then we use that, what's typically a higher, because it's a high-performing, uh, result from, from the ULI, you know, International Council Shopping Center model. So if I understand your question, if we threw all this in a model, I'll say, I wouldn't be surprised if the number came out higher. Um, and with all due respect to the applicant, you know, the model, ULI, if you look at that, and you look at, you know, I think we have in this report 12 centers that the model used in Southern California. Those were, and actually, their ratios are lower than here, but those are high-generating centers. You know, this is not like The Oaks, this is not, you know, Topanga. So what we do is we take that, and sometimes we go in and we count another center, and it can be booming. You know, it can be Trader Joe's, it can be Starbucks, which I think somebody alluded to. But this is not that. So what we did is we said, okay, the existing uses, what is, what is it being generated? And it was fairly low on a land use by land use basis. But then we plugged in what is not there yet, and we modeled that up. So I think if you threw this and said, if they came to us today and said, you know, we're going to build the center, we would probably come up with the same number that you did. But these land uses are not boom, you know, the biggest and highest in, in general. This is an older center. And typically, that's what we see, is it's not going to be generating the rate as a, as a brand-new center.
Sure, makes sense. Yeah. Uh, keep in mind, though, this is car country. We, we don't have a lot of transit uh, or electric bicycles lying around. In fact, I think those are prohibited.
Not a bad idea.
So, yeah, there is, there is that car factor. And I did notice there is a, uh, there was a mode adjustment at 90%. So.
For?
Uh, for the, uh.
Oh, okay. Um, and I will say, again, when we talk, we're talking more about the economics and the performance. We recognize this is car country, no question. So I think that was taken into account.
Oh, sure. Yeah, just regarding the, the 10% reduction that you're alluding to. Um, we typically do that based on local data. So we actually use census data, um, transportation, means of transportation to work data. So, um, you know, we assume the employees, you know, out of, if there's 10 employees, one might get dropped off potentially, you know, maybe not take transit, you know, as you said, transit's limited. But, um, you know, we, we did use local data to, to get that number.
Okay. And then I think just my last question, I apologize to my fellow commissioners. Uh, the base ratios, uh, given that this is a shopping center with quite a few shared uses, retail in this case, and then, uh, medical offices, offices, uh, fast food. How were you able to determine the base ratio for each use? Did you conduct interviews? Did you stalk people as they went into each store? I've done that before, so.
We didn't do that. Um, so the, the base ratios, um, all of them were based on the counts that we did back in 2009. So we, so we would conduct parking occupancy counts in September, um, 2009. And then we waited, so we take a, the total number, and we weighted it based on the land use. Um, and then we took the, the, um, adjustments and everything, you know, bumped it up to December conditions. Um, and then, with the exception of retail, because there was no retail at that time. So the retail base ratio is what is recommended in the International Council, International Council of Shopping Centers and Urban Land Institute Shared Parking Model. So, um, so, yeah, the, the non-retail land base ratios are all based on actual demand that we saw in 2009. And then the retail, um, base ratio is, is based on what's recommended in the model. And as Stefan said, it's kind of like the high-performing, high-profile, um, shopping center. So, so we think it's a conservatively high estimate of retail demand.
But the base ratios are basically an educated guess of what they would be weighted based on what the ULI ratios would have been.
Kind of. I, I think, I guess.
Or maybe, or whatever the percentage usage would have been.
Also, in a nutshell, and I mean, the last report, which was, um, well, yes. Um, it was a proportion, it was a weighted average. And if you look at the calculations on that report, it was a pretty beefy report. But right, it was said that basically you have this breakdown of land uses, this breakdown of parking. If we assume roughly that maybe these land uses are lower generating, they are, because like you said, it's lower than the model came out. But that, you know, typically at this peak, we would see this much office presence, this much, um, retail presence, this much restaurant presence. So that's my understanding. It's a, that report, the 2009, which the city accepted, is my understanding. Um, that's how they did that. And, and also, we looked at it, yeah, in terms of, you know, our expertise, we said, this makes sense.
Sure. Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Link. I, I giggled at first because of your enthusiasm. I apologized to everybody. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Chair Bass. I, I think City of Thousand Oaks is very fortunate to have Commissioner Link on, on the commission. Um, actually, this is, my first question is for you, Mr. Sellers. Um, I'm going to go more basic, uh, a little bit, uh, which is to say, the basic question is, uh, reading the staff report and the recommendations, is the applicant in agreement with all the terms and conditions of the, of the report?
Yes, we're, we're in agreement with all the conditions. And including 14, which gives you an arm to come in and say, hey, you got to do something different to remove a problem. And let me tell you, every landlord I know, if you've got a parking problem, he or she deals with it. Because then they, otherwise, they're going to start losing tenants. And that's their income.
Do you know if, uh, you or the applicant have talked to the property owner to the west as to whether or not there'd be any overflow parking issues?
No, we have not. From a practical standpoint, I'm sorry.
So again, the question is.
From a practical standpoint, I, I drive by the project, you know, two times a month at minimum. And there is always adequate and empty parking spaces where the Denny's is, because Denny's has a big stretch of parking there. And there's usually, you can park there all day long.
So you got no objection from that property owner? In fact, from what it sounds like, no other comments from any of, anybody else?
Correct, none whatsoever.
Um, you indicate that you have a discussion with Roger Dunn with regard to taking that space?
Yes.
The entire space?
Um, they're going to, uh, take, they have 8,000, that, the existing space, and they would move over to the, the, the bigger space. So the empty space that they're, there's, the space that they're leaving would be technically empty.
Okay, because what I, kind of my general question was, there's a lot of people taking buildings and cutting them in thirds now to try to find ways to occupy them. And I didn't know if that was.
No, the, the building's not designed that way. It's so big that you're essentially, what we have is what we have. There's no way you can really break it out because of the way the parking is designed and the way the center is. We've got two spaces, and that's pretty much, we're going to be with that.
So the Roger Dunn would potentially, I understand that, flip spaces, and then you'd have this other space that Roger Dunn occupies that you'd find a new tenant for.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Uh, and again, I think, uh, Commissioner Link pointed out that parking space designations at Roger Dunn, those would go away, I'm assuming.
Yes, exactly. Yes. Yeah. Because they would not be there.
And you have no other, well, you don't have an agreement with the shared property owner. Um, again, I'm just, you know, curious about where the overflow would end up going. And again, Commissioner Link pointed out in terms of, sometimes, again, there's higher traffic areas depending upon the use.
I, I, for example, I was there Saturday at 3:00. And if you looked at the, the, they took the pictures, the city took the pictures, is you've got that corridor standing from the shared driveway. And that whole space was empty, uh, completely. So you had, on Saturday, you had the parking, obviously, where Roger Dunn is, because obviously, they were busy. But then if you looked onto that little side section, and I don't know if you, uh, where is it? Where is it?
Mr. Contreras is really good at getting photographs that hit.
Yeah, it's, it's, forgive me, it's, it's the looking east side. It, it was completely empty. So I mean, there, there's, I don't ever foresee where it would be spill over to the Denny's spot. You know, they were always empty like that.
And I know furniture stores have had our time. And I know this spot for years, there was a assignment place there, I believe, before. And it's, it's had a long, difficult thing. So to take over this other spot, are you looking for the same type of, uh, use, so to speak? You're not looking for a laser tag place? I mean.
No, no. Uh, um, to be honest with you, we actually are in negotiations with the, the pool table company.
Okay. So again, a similar type use?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, not a high-end use?
No, far from it. No, we think it'd be a perfect match, actually.
I have, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Vice Chair Newman, do you have any further questions for the applicant, sir?
No questions for the applicant. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. Everybody covered all my questions, so I'm going to move along here. Um, I believe we do not have anybody in public comments, so we'll move beyond that. We'll follow up with, uh, Senior Planner Contreras, if you have any, anything to follow up with.
Um, no, I, I believe, um, a city attorney answered the question regarding condition number 14, 14, quite eloquently and expansive for, um, Commissioner Newman. And, um, staff, you know, pretty much, um, as I mentioned earlier, evaluated the, the parking study provided and did a, you know, our own detail site investigation of the current parking conditions. And just relying on the, um, experts here and the, with parking consultants to further make our evaluation and recommendation to the commission.
Thank you, sir. All right. Does the applicant have any further comments? And nobody else seems to have any further comments. All right, they are going to pass. So at this point, I guess we can go ahead and close the hearing. And I will open the floor for a motion and/or discussion. Commissioner Lanson, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair Bass. Um, you know, I, I think we, uh, realize when we do these city surveys, parking and traffic are, are the top things that people are concerned about. So we never want to necessarily create an issue where we're setting a precedent, I think, as Commissioner Newman pointed out as well. Um, there are times, obviously, when you're looking, you want to provide some flexibility. Uh, I've lived here a long time, and I've seen that center not have a lot of traffic most of the time. There are times it does, and that's why I'm a little concerned in terms of where the overflow would go. My hope, though, is that there can be something done with, you know, the different owners in the area to get it done. Uh, there is some flexibility, especially based on what it sounds like your intended concepts are. So I will go ahead and move, uh, make the motion to approve. DPMJ 2020 dash 70704 authorizing a 23.5% parking reduction of the minimum parking required per the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code parking ratios for the specific business operations existing and proposed in the Hillcrest Gardens Shopping Center at 2800 Camino de Osos, based on the findings and subject to the conditions approved, uh, contained in the attachment resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. Commissioner Link, do you have any additional comments?
I, I would say I'm conflicted. I, I don't have any objections to the methodology of the study. That, the problem that I have is it's sort of this, uh, series of unfortunate events, to quote a movie title, that, uh, we're looking at 2009 and 2020, which is where the data is coming from. And knowing what I know in the industry that I'm in, neither of those years are in any way reliable whatsoever. In fact, uh, we're, we're not counting anything right now. I, I have any number of residents who are asking for speed homes, and I have to tell them, I, if, if you want your speed homes, you're not going to get them because traffic is not what it was. Now, at the same time, we're looking at seeing, uh, if you go and check on Google, uh, Google Maps and see that, well, parking is, or, excuse me, traffic has returned to normal in the 4:05, well, yes and no. People are driving more, they're not taking transit. And transit has taken a huge dip. So we're in this weird paradigm shift, and I honestly don't think that we're going to be sticking with this work-from-home situation. It's, uh, it's an interesting concept, and a lot of people are finding that, uh, yes, it's work for some, and no, it's not work for others. So I do see that quite a bit in studies coming across my desk and say, well, we don't think this is going, well, do we know? So there's just so much uncertainty for me. I.
for me. I, I don't know where to go with it. I mean, at the same time, I think that, uh, as long as the use is compatible, and we have condition 14, which gives us some teeth. I mean, I hate to, it to come up where the city says, yeah, you can't have this use anymore, you gotta kick them out. Because really, there's no, uh, we can't compel an adjacent property owner to give you a reciprocal agreement. There's just, that, that can't happen. So, Denny's isn't going to be compelled to say, yeah, we gotta share your parking, or El Pollo Loco can't do it, or the coffee shop can't do it, or the, or the motel can't do it. So, where, where it ends up is that the, if the retail occupant ends up generating more parking demand than is necessary, we're going to have to kick them out, because there's no street parking either. So, I, I don't know, it seems like kind of a lose-lose situation to me. I don't know where I'm going to go with this. I don't know. But those are, that's my comments in a nutshell.
Appreciate your thoughts, sir. Vice Chair Newman?
Well, I'm not going to be any help either. Um, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Link on this. Um, I certainly want to do everything that we can to help retail. Um, we all know it's struggling. Um, and if Roger Dunn seems to be doing well and can flip to the larger space, great, good for them. And if there are talks underway with another company, as the applicant indicated, great. I hope that goes through, and I hope that that business thrives as well. At the same time, I completely agree with Commissioner Link that the data we're working with is, is, to put it charitably soft. Um, despite what the applicant said, 2009 was a terrible year for retail, nationally at least. The International Council of Shopping Centers, which has been cited here, uh, reported that November 2008, uh, retail sales were its worst in 35 years. And that trend continued into 2009. So, I don't know how reliable that is as a starting point, and given what's, the way, the crazy year we've just been through, and, and what now appears to be, uh, a very serious resurgence of COVID, uh, I don't know that current statistics are a meaningful predictor of future performance either. So, I, I'm, don't have Commissioner Link's parking expertise, I don't know, I, I do know from test methodology design, which I have some background in, that, um, it's hard to make, to design a predictive model using, um, anomalous data. That, that, that I know from many, many other experiments that did not work very well. So, I guess I'm leaning toward allowing the reduction, but I'm doing that more out of a wish for retail to succeed in our city, local retail to succeed in our city, than I am out of any hard data that we have to support that. But I'm leaning that way. I mean, I'm not, I'm not completely convinced that we should be in the business of granting hypothetical, reductions over hypothetical situations. I'd be a lot more comfortable if there were a specific application that said, here's the business, and for this business to succeed, we need this many fewer parking spaces. I'd, I'd be much more comfortable voting for something like that. And that's really all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Newman. Well, I'm going to follow your guys' comments with, uh, with my layperson's take on it. So, I'm inclined to agree with you. I think that the study, uh, 2009, 2021, obviously, were transitional years in our nation. Um, I changed careers after 2009 as a result of the, uh, the decline in automotive, which I worked in automotive service. So, it didn't just impact housing, just so you know. But, uh, that being taken, uh, we are now in a post-pandemic era. I've listened to the, uh, retail property manager tell me that he spent at least three years of the last decade not collecting rent on that property. And, um, I had a fellow commissioner mention that there's crime in that parking lot because of, uh, probably the fact that the parking lot's empty. So, those things steer me in the direction of wanting that property to succeed, wanting to get, uh, clientele in there, and wanting that to be a place that people want to go to, because I think it would potentially reduce, um, the negative impacts of having empty, uh, retail space in our town. Um, so, for that reason, and for the reason that the, uh, property manager seems to be indicating that he does have tenants in mind very specifically, and he's very aware that he has to keep his tenants happy with their parking needs, I feel inclined to, uh, to allow property owners, uh, do as much, you know, or assist them as much as possible in, in running their properties correctly. I don't know if that impacts anybody else's decision, but, uh, that's my feelings on it. So, I think with that, um, we can go ahead and go to a vote.
Commissioner Lanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Link?
No.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
And Chair Bus?
Aye.
So, that motion passes three to one with Commissioner Link voting no, and Commissioner McMahon recusing.
Any grief party who wishes to appeal to Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal within the Community Development Department within 10 days. Uh, congratulations, gentlemen, and good luck. Thank you. All right. Now, we just need to get Commissioner McMahon back. We're hopeful she's not far away. As long as we don't lock her up. All right. And, uh, with that, we'll move on. I believe we have no department reports, is that correct?
That is correct. There are no department reports this evening.
All right. Then, uh, now's the time for commission comments or any AB 1234 reports. Are there any comments from my fellow commissioners? I am looking over at Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Chair Bus. Um, I just wanted to, uh, point out, I believe, the Manah Food Bank is having its groundbreaking on a plan that we passed, uh, a little bit ago on Wednesday morning, which I was really excited about to see them move forward. Uh, but I also had a question for staff on, uh, I was having a discussion with Kyle Jory of the Acorn on, on Twitter about, uh, accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and how on our website, we have a lot of information that we link to in terms of ADUs. And one of them is actually a staff report that talked about the costs. And, uh, an inquiry came about, is why don't we list those costs actually on the website, as opposed to linking it in a staff report that people kind of have to dig to find? I know there's one part, there's three different, I think, components to the cost, two of which I think are set, one of which I know is dependent on, uh, the property. But, um, so people were thinking that would be a good way of, uh, giving information to the public in a clearer fashion as to what ADUs cost from a city standpoint.
That's actually a very good point, and something that we're working on now. Um, as we speak, each department is working on creating more materials for the public to use, um, such as the ADUs, and have data and fees and that kind of thing out there, so they know what size limitations are, where they can put them, what the connection fees are, and everything that is associated with an ADU. And a typical building permit cost for, say, a 750 square foot detached buil, building. So, we're, we are preparing those documents, and we'll, we'll go live with those, uh, likely within the next month.
I try every once in a while to, to highlight something about the, the city's website, because it does have a great deal of information about so many different issues that I think the public would be, like, like to be informed about, and that's one of them. So, I'm glad to hear that. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. Vice Chair Newman, do you have anything to add, sir?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Then, uh, we'll move on to staff update. Mr. Kearns, are there any follow-up items, announcements, upcoming issues?
Uh, no follow-up items. Um, we do have another, the next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for August 30th. There is nothing currently on that agenda, but we are working on items, and hopefully, something will shape up and be in front of you on that date.
You got it. Then I appreciate your time, sir. Um, just a quick, uh, mention to everybody out there that happens to be watching. My understanding is there's been a resurgence, uh, to some degree, of the COVID virus in our community. I know personally someone who was affected and diagnosed today, so I encourage you all to vaccinate yourselves and mask up. Um, I appreciate it. Stay safe out there. And with that, uh, our meeting is adjourned till next meeting on August 30th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Have a great rest of your summer.